Okay, good evening. We are gonna get this going. Uh, we have a budget workshop. Um, and that is of April 11th, 2018. As a reminder, if you would like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item. This is your roll call. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Platt?
Here.
Councilmember Tesari?
Here.
Councilmember Rush will be marked absent. Mayor Protem Rigby?
Here.
Mayor Lorimer?
Here. All right, the pledge of allegiance tonight, straight from our nation's capital. Mr. Tesari?
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Great job.
All right, public comments. Um, any members of the public may address the council in items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on the agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda to be made at the time the item is considered, and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole, and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Mr. Aguilar, do we have any, uh, public comment cards?
We have received none.
None. Anybody? All right, seeing none, we're moving forward. Council business. This is item 4.1, uh, Budget Workshop Fiscal Year 2018-19. We have a PowerPoint. Ms. Montoya?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, and public. We are here today to go over the budget workshop study session. Um, our purpose today is to go over, it's meant to be informative. It's to, to inform the council and public on what monies the cities received, how we spend it, also to show the city's financial position, and lastly, to seek direction from council on goals and priorities as discussed in the goal-setting session on February 14th. Um, this would be to include new items in the budget, which will be brought back next month at the end of May. So with that, our agenda. And again, we'll go over the introduction, historical snapshot, our financial position, and the discussed goals and priorities. Um, just to inform the public, this presentation will be on the city's website for future, uh, viewing. So I'm going to breeze through a lot of the introduction section to get to more of the meat of the presentation. Um, for our current community profile, we have a population of just over 64,000. Our median age is over 32 years old. Number of households is roughly 15,000. Our median household income is 107,000. Our median home price is 576,000, um, which is well above the Riverside County average of 365,000, and our unemployment rate is 3.4%. So as you can see, Eastville is a great place to live. It's a great community, and it has a lot going for it.
Quick question.
Of course.
Uh, the 107,000, I hear different numbers all the time. Um, how, does it vary, or is it?
And this was taken from the US Census Bureau, and it's a little behind.
Okay.
Um, so different sources will give you different information.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, it just depends, uh, Mayor Lorimer, where, where you're getting your data from. So, um, the census is always trailing.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
And, and if I could, um, Anna, can we back up to the previous slide? Um, if I may, I, I feel that it, it is important, um, to kinda go over this slide really quickly, not necessarily for the city council members, but for the benefit of the public. Um, we are a contract city model, so, um, we do contract services through, um, the Riverside County Sheriff's Department for law enforcement, contract with Cal Fire for, um, fire services, and we use a blend of contract staff and regular city staff. So we have contract services for planning, public works, and building and safety. So this is in reference to our organizational chart.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Along with that, um, we have some city statistics. Um, we have city employees, this was as of 2017, of 12.75 full-time equivalent hours. Our contract staff is 23 persons, sworn officers is 28, which will go up next year with the revision of the sheriff's contract to 100 hours. Uh, firefighters per day is six, and that's three per station. Uh, building permits issued in 2017 were about 1,600. We had an operating budget of just over 19 million, and we now have reserve, audited reserves of $27.7 million, uh, which over half of that is committed or reserved, uh, for certain purposes. We are in the process, and we have hired three additional personnel, so that number will go up to 15.75 for city employees, and that's as of next month. Just to give a little bit of legislative updates, uh, we recently had SB 130, which is property tax in lieu of VLF. This, uh, restores, uh, vehicle license fee funding to new cities, um, Eastville included. That's roughly about three, 4.3 million per year, um, that we are anticipating. However, we have not recovered the 19 million as of 2011, when the, um, vehicle license fee was taken away from Eastville. Um, however, we're grateful to have that 4.3, uh, that we fought for for so long. SB 1, Road Repair and Accountability Act, that allocates about 1.1 million per year, and that's dedicated to road maintenance and repair. We recently had CalPERS findings that the amortization rates increased. What this means is that instead of 30 years to pay off an obligation, we only have 20, which increases our current payments every year, but overall, will reduce the, the net liability. Uh, so you'll see a little bit of a bump in that obligation as it, we pay it off a little bit faster. Just for your information, our current PERS rates are 2% at 60, uh, 60-years-old retirement for classic, at 2% at 62-years-old. And unlike most cities, uh, the employees of Eastville pay their own portion of PERS, uh, which is, uh, more conservative than you'll see in other cities where the city will pay the, the employee's portion.
So i- is there a savings then, associated with that change, uh, related, related to the amortization?
There is in the, the long term, but in the short term, we're gonna see a little bit of higher cost to make up that accelerated payment.
Excellent, thank you.
So we have a healthy reserve, and, and this is due, uh, mostly to these five points. We've had strong fiscal management from city council, a very conservative budgeting approach year over year. We've accumulated reserves for future investment, which typically go for facilities, infrastructure, public safety, uh, long-term goals. We've leveraged technology, um, to mitigate our minimal staffing, and we've always had a balanced budget. The print is a little bit fine here, and, but, uh, this shows our historical reserves since 2011, when we started out with about $4 million. We're now at 27.7 million. Um, of that 27.7 million, we have 16 million committed to certain purposes. As you can see, the council has committed 3 million to the Civic Center project. We have 6 million reserved for fire, um, operations. This is a restricted revenue source, so we are not able to spend that revenue for other purposes. And we have committed 50% of our operating budget to emergency contingency for a rainy day, and this is typically about six months of operation. So you can see the available and committed reserves is roughly about 11 million dollars. We have had a few ac- few new accolades in 2017. I'll just mention those. We were top 100 safest cities in the US, and 25 in California. Again, top 100 safest cities in America, safest cities in California, 93, so these are from different sources. We've achieved the Economic Development, uh, Corporate Investment and Community Impact Award. We've become a Tree City USA, and we've also had our Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the seventh year, um, for as long as we've been incorporated. So a lot to be proud of. So back in 2012, uh, the city adopted a strategic plan. These are the four goals that we still maintain. We want to establish a solid fiscal foundation for the city, optimize economic development potential, and maintain an excellent level of public safety, and provide high-quality public facilities. And so those are the goals that we strive to achieve as we do the budgeting. Um, if you don't mind, I'm gonna skip over most of this, and again, you can reference it on the website. I'd like to go over just the last fiscal year, um, of some of the achievements and major initiatives that, um, the council has seen and approved. So we've approved a beyond framework funding. We've initiated a purchase and sales agreement with Southern California Edison for the Street Like Acquisition Program. Hamner-Milikan street improvements have been completed. We've done, uh, the majority of residential story seal, and that was funded by the new SB 1 funding, Road Maintenance and Repair Act. We've amended the personnel policies and procedures, as well as done a comprehensive salary study and job analysis. We've hosted CERT classes, uh, with grant funding. We've had citywide cleanup and abatement events, initiated roadway adoption program, recruited for our first assistant city manager, adopted a LEO master plan, and amended the law enforcement contract, and these are just, um, some of the items that we've seen. So we've had a very busy year. We've also invested a lot of time and resources into capital projects, and you can see towards the bottom are some of the newer, uh, completed capital projects, which is the Hamner-Avner overlay, along with Milikan as well. We've done, uh, rehabilitation for storm drains. We've had electric vehicle charging stations, um, constructed, and we are still, uh, busy with other projects such as the Hamner widening. We're in the midst of the annual overlay and a lot of pedestrian improvements as well. Future capital projects that you'll see next month with the CIP program coming, uh, with the draft budget will be the Limone, I-15 interchange. This is completely funded by TUMF, so you will not see, you'll see minor, um, impact to the city for staff time and inspection. Uh, the, the majority is funded from other sources. We are going to have publicly accessible electric vehicle charging stations. Um, again, the city hall and library is on, on the CIP plan, and also highway safety improvement programs. And all of these do not in, impact the general fund at all. It'll be funded by SB 1 gas tax or Measure A, which our source is dedicated to, to street maintenance. You may see, however, some funding, we'll have to analyze the city hall, Civic Center, Library, how that will be funded or, um, financed. Now I'd like to go over the current fiscal situation, just to give you a picture of where we're at. This is the trends. The red line is our revenues, uh, year over year, and the blue bars are expenditures. Um, as you can see, every year we've had a surplus, which again goes back to our, our conservative budgeting, um, and making sure that we don't spend more than we get. In 2017, we saw a big jump in our expenditures. This is due to our fire station construction, which was paid for by fire funds. And then in 2018, you see a big jump in revenues. This is due to the new VLF funding, which is about 4.3 million dollars, uh, which we have not seen in previous years.
And I have, I have one question. Is, is that 2018 for that VLF on the revenue side for 2018, is that for the full, the full 4.3 million, or is that for, what's?
Yes, that will be, this is estimated for 2018, and we kinda project that to June 30. We've received half of that payment, and we should receive the second half, um, roughly in May. So again, this presentation is meant to be very informative. This is how we receive our money and, um, resources. 29% is from property tax. Um, 1.5 is from transfer tax. That's from sales of homes in the city. We receive 8.8 million in sales tax, which is roughly 32% of our revenues. The newly, um, SB 130 VLF funds is just, which is 4.3, and this brings us to about 15.5% of our revenues. Franchise tax is 5%. Permits and licenses is 13%. Charges for services, which the, the majority is for fines, um, tickets, um, that sort of revenue is 2.5%, and then other miscellaneous is 1.5. As we build out, um, the permits and licenses will tend to go down, um, and the majority of it is, is based on taxes, which is very subject to economic fluctuations. So if we have an economic downturn, we're not gonna get as much sales tax, or, uh, if the home values go down, we won't get as much property taxes, 'cause the assessments will go down as well. So as you can see, 83% of our revenues comes from taxes, which I mentioned, you know, could fluct- fluctuate with economic downturns. So that's where economic development comes in, uh, to try to generate sales tax, uh, development, um, commercial building. So this breaks down, um, sales tax for the city. Our tax rate is 7.75. So if, for every $1 a purchase, we receive roughly 8 cents, um, to the city. Actually, 8, 8 cents is the sales tax. We only get 1 cent of that that comes to the city. A half cent goes, uh, comes to the city through Measure A, however, that is restricted for transportation purposes. The rest goes to the state of California and to Riverside County. The breakdown of property tax, um, as you can see, for every $1 paid in property tax, about 9 cents comes to the city, uh, the rest goes to schools, county, and what they call Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, and also special districts. We do have a special fire, um, portionment, uh, that is, has been negotiated with the county, and that goes strictly for the fire fund and for fire services.
Councilmembers and members of the public, this, this slide, um, we keep bringing this back year after year, because it is one of the things I think you hear the most from citizens, is, "I pay a lot in taxes here. I pay a lot of property taxes." Um, and that may very well be true, but, um, we're trying to illustrate here that of, of the dollars that they pay in property taxes, the city of Eastville actually gets the smallest percentage, at less than 2.5%. So, um, I commend staff and, and council for, for really stretching our dollars. So this is, this is what we have to work with, is .89 cents, oh, well, .8, .089 cents per dollar of property tax, so less than a, less than a dime.
This, just to mention, does not include any CFD taxes or Melrose. Um, this is just general tax, uh, general property tax. If there's any confusion. So just to put, um, this in more practical terms, if you were to buy a new car for $40,000, the city would receive only $400 of that, and an additional 200 for Measure A. And I just wanna note that, um, it has to be sales within the city boundaries. Um, any sales outside of the city would not come to Eastville. Uh, for a home of $400,000, the city would see roughly $99 of that, and then the fire fund would receive $257 of that sale. So it's not a lot.
Quick clarif- quick, uh, clarification question. I, I had heard that if you buy a car, that it's based off of where you live, and you get that back. I- is that not the case? That it goes to the city where you're registered, as opposed to at the dealership? I, I know they get a portion, but...
That's not my understanding, but I'll have to clarify that.
Okay.
Um, I think it's point of sale where you purchase.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. The transaction, uh, the taxes, uh, will go towards where the, the point of transaction is. The VLF fee will be, go based on, on where you reside.
Okay, yeah, uh, I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
This is an example of some of the council initiatives that have been, um, turned into new programs, if you will, uh, for those being foreclosure registration, some vehicle code and parking enforcement, business registration, and rental registration. This kinda shows the trends year after year, and the impact of those. Um, and it varies, as you can see, depending on activity in the city, or, for example, with vehicle and code, uh, violations, uh, we've, uh, hired a part-time street sweeping enforcement officer, so you can see that revenue has gone up 45% in the last year, just, uh, because we've dedicated resources to that program. Uh, some of them are tapering off, like business registration, um, and rental registration. You're not gonna see a huge jump, because the programs have been ongoing, and the same resources have been dedicated year after year. You can see some of the impacts that have happened, um, as you dedicate resources to a certain program. So we talked about what, where we get the money from, and now we can talk about where the money goes. Uh, we have budgeted 65% public safety out of our general fund. Uh, that's 8.4 to police and 4.6 to fire. Um, the rest goes to community development and to other, that includes, the other includes administration, um, legal services, finance, city clerk's office, city manager's office, uh, that's part of the other. And the total general fund expenditures for 2017-18 are just over 19 million. This is just another picture of where the money goes. Again, 65% of that goes to public safety, and you can see all the other pieces of the pie and where they go. To give a little more detail on public safety, our police department had an operating budget of 8.8 million, with 28 positions, 90 service hours a day, 25 sworn officers, and two CSOs, and a motorcycle officer. The trend has been an increase, uh, in cost of living year over year, about 6 to 8%. Last year we showed 9.6, and that's, that includes the motor officer that we, um, that we contracted with. And then we, uh, did not include, which we will in next year's budget, the 10 additional patrol hours for a total of 100, and the second motor officer, which was approved, um, the last couple of months. So that will be implemented in fiscal year 18-19 due to the police academy hiring schedule. There's a little bit of a delay in that. Our fire department is 23 of the general, 23% of the general fund budget for 4.6 million, um, and this again comes from the dedicated fire tax, uh, property tax. There's six positions per shift for two fire stations with a total staff of 16 firemen. We added a new engine of a couple of years ago, and we just completed the construction of fire station 31 in February of 2017. Calls for service are roughly 3,000 per year, um, and it's increases as the population increases as well. And our increase over last year was 38%, and this is due to staffing the additional fire station. So as we look from the past, we kinda wanna look at the future and see where we're headed. Uh, we base our forecasts on historical trends and economic conditions. We try to have a long-range planning tool, which typically we've only forecasted about five years out, because we're such a new city, and, you know, it's, it's very fluid. We keep changing our programs and increasing our programs and resources. Um, event, eventually, we'd like to get to where we're doing a 10-year or 15-year projection, and I think, um, after this budget year will be very telling how we, we shift our focus, um, especially adding the, the, the extra 10 hours to get 100 patrol hours. So after we've seen some of these changes, we can, um, start to look more into the future another 10 years. Gonna talk a little bit about financial jargon, about GASV 54, fund balance classifications. Bear with me. Um, when we have fund balance, a lot of it is restricted for stipulated, uh, purposes, such as fire tax. We can't spend that for any other purpose than what it's stipulated for. We have committed resources, such as the Civic Center, which is council-imposed. When you dedicate a certain amount of resources to a certain purpose, and that's done through resolution typically, which we've had, uh, 3 million dedicated to the Civic Center, and also 50% to, uh, emergency contingency. We also have assigned, and assigned, um, fund balances, which we don't have any of those, um, at this time. So we've seen this slide before. I just wanna reiterate where we are. Uh, 27.7 million in reserve balances. Of that, 16 million is committed or restricted, which we cannot spend for any other purpose than what is defined, which leaves us with about 11 million dollars in available balance.
And I have a quick question.
Sure.
Why, in, so when you look at the, you know, where our revenues are allocated from, when you, that one slide where it says property tax, uh, sales tax, and it says, you know, this is the percentage, that's what's allocated to the general fund. Sometimes it gets confusing, because, yes, even though the fire fund is in the general fund, the difference is that fund is restricted versus everything else is unrestricted. Is there a way to kinda, I mean, is there a way to look at it where that's really two separate items? Um, because they are really different in the way it's allocated, so it's not, to me, I look at it as it's not truly general fund, because we don't have the flexibility to spend the items that we wanna spend it on. I get it goes to the city, but it's not, you get what I'm saying?
That's very correct. Yes, we account for it separately in a separate general fund. So we have a fire fund specifically for that purpose, where we don't co-mingle with the other programs, um, but for financial statement purposes, they are combined.
Got it.
They are defined as general fund, but for internal purposes, we do separate those and designate those, so they're not co-mangled.
And maybe future budget presentations, is it possible to see what that looks like? It, you know, kinda this slide, and these are awesome slides. Maybe have another slide, what it looks like, the percentages of allocation to what we're getting in revenue, take out the fire structural revenue.
Absolutely.
The property tax revenue side of that, to see what...
As you can see, the green bar is restricted for fire, so that is designated specifically for fire, 5.93 million dollars. Um, so if you take that out, we're about, um, 22 million.
Yeah.
In reserves for the true general fund. But we can se- definitely separate that out in the future.
Yeah, I think for me, uh, the way I would see it, just, it seems like a very realistic approach when we see, 'cause then the percentages change of what we're actually getting when we look at unrestricted general fund. I kinda like to see what that, what those percentage allocations look like when you take out the fireside, that's all.
Yes, we can certainly do that.
No, th- thank you.
So when we look at forecasting, we generally look at status quo services, which means just no additional programs, just where we are currently, and what that means for the future. So, um, we don't forecast projecting out additional patrol hours or fire services. We just use what the current services are. We don't add additional personnel, um, and we use trends based on historical trends, which police and fire typically been about 7% increase per year. Non-safety is generally about 3%, and the same with revenues, about 3% growth a year. And that's due to CPI and other factors. The contract negotiations with the county board, uh, those are out of our control, uh, or jurisdiction, so we just, uh, use whatever those trends have been in the past. This slide, um, was very different last year. Uh, we did not have the VLF funding at that point, which is, again, 4.3 million that we didn't have. So last year, this slide showed an operating deficit at 2023. Uh, so we are very fortunate to get that VLF funding, uh, which gives us a bit of a surplus every year. However, that gap narrows just slightly because of those public safety increases every year. Uh, we're only generating about 3% growth in revenue, however, the expenses, if you remember, 65% for public safety are increasing at 7% a year. So that, that gap tends to de- decrease, uh, a little bit.
That, that 7%, is that, uh, is that true for both fire and sheriff services?
It has been. It varies slightly, but that's, that's the average. Additional considerations when we forecast, again, a rising public safety costs, aging infrastructure, population growth. aging infrastructure, population growth, impacts from development, and of course, long-term projects such as the Civic Center. We've had a balanced budget every year. And luckily, we haven't had to use these methods to increase revenue or decrease expenditures. Some of those methods would be to, look at it, user fee study, utility users tax, which has to be voter-approved, TOT tax, again, which has to be voter-approved. We can revisit franchise agreements. We just pull whatever revenue or resources we can from economic development or grant funding. We, we've explored a lot of that as far as grant funding and economic development, but we haven't had to go to vote for any additional taxes. The other method would be to decrease expenditures by reducing non-essential services, reducing staffing levels, cut sworn officers or cut the police contract, or explore other alternatives to public safety, which we've not had to do. We've been fortunate enough to have a balanced budget every year. This paints a picture of what our rising public safety costs have been. The actual numbers have increased 89% since incorporation. This does include an increase in services. I believe we started out with 70 hours of patrol hours a day and were up to 90. We've increased staffing for the fire station as well, but it shows the trends going up. This also includes cost of living. So this is total expenditures year over year. The projections, again, taking that 7% based on status quo services. So same number of patrol hours, same number of fire services, projecting it over 7% year after year. I did include the approved 100 hours in here for 2019. So it does show a little bit of a bump. But again, it's a pretty astounding increase, 73% over the next five or six years. So we have to account for that when we do some of our financial forecasting. So I painted a picture of kind of where we are, where we want to go. And we'd like to get some direction from council and community for some of the goals and priorities for the next budget year. So we're seeking direction on some of the services that we would like to see in the next budget, which we will bring back at the end of May. Just some questions to put out there, get us thinking and discussing. Are current service levels satisfactory? How can the city bring in additional revenue if we need to? Is the city, meaning the community, demands? Can we sustain the level of services with our increasing costs and staffing? Are the strategic plans' objectives being achieved? How should we invest in the future, whether that be infrastructure, public safety, however that may be? Or do we continue saving for a rainy day? Or look towards long-term projects such as the Civic Center or new infrastructure? So based on the goal-setting session on February 14th of this year, we've itemized each of the things that were discussed and also included some that staff has requested to be brought to council with the itemized costs for each of these services. And these are all estimates based on our best knowledge to date. What we'd like to do is seek direction again from council on how to incorporate these, if any, into the next year's budget and what we want to see added to our services. So going line by line, and we'll just go over the costs. And if we have any questions, I can defer to the specific departments for additional detail. We've already added 10 patrol hours a day. To add another 10 to 110 hours total would be an additional $700,000. To add a third motor officer, it would be about 500, excuse me, $350,000. Some of that is ongoing costs, some of it is one-time costs. I think the difference is about $35,000 would be just the one-time cost. To add a medic engine is $667,000. City council's requested automated license plate readers. We've estimated that at about $1 million. And some of that is, the majority is a one-time cost for equipment.
If I counsel, that item right there for the license plate reader cameras also includes CCTV. So it would be not just the devices for the license plate.
So would it be okay to omit the part where it says, well, the closed caption TV camera traffic?
I believe that part is ongoing cost year to year.
Got it. 182 service those cameras year after year? The, the current camera systems that we have, the?
No, 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 no. No, that, this is a, an estimate from Public Works for ongoing maintenance of all of the CCTV camera system plus automated license plate readers, the pole-mounted cameras, et cetera.
I, I thought you meant what was, I was, I was thinking what was existing now, I was like, wait.
No, no.
We were about anything right now.
And this is, this is just rough estimates at this time until we get more direction from the city council.
And just to follow up on that, what, what kind of equipment are we talking about? Like, how much? I mean, does that mean every unit that works in the city would be equipped with the vehicle-mounted?
So, so I actually have some very good news. The Riverside County Sheriff's Department has just recently approved their contract with, gosh, I'm drawing a blank, search the V, Vigilant, thank you, Vigilant Solutions. So that is the same provider that we were looking at for the fixed-position license plate reader systems on the traffic signals. So we will be working with the sheriff's department regarding implementation, how they're implementing it on their end and how we're going to implement fixed position. So to answer your question, I'm not sure that that included patrol units. I believe that just included the traffic signals in the city of Eastvale. And Craig is not here to answer that question.
Fixed units?
I'm sorry?
Which, which one, the, the million dollars?
The million dollars.
Can I, I could probably shed some light. I mean, they give an example, went over down to Chino. I don't want to get too ahead. I think they've spent a quarter of a million on this same exact system. And they have, I believe, 12 to 10 to 12 sites. And that's where they're at right now, building it out. So we would be, quarter, I mean, full million would be quite a bit. But it's, it could be potentially, it's really up to us as a council when we bring this up. How much do we want? And obviously, when, when Joe, when Joe Injor won, everyone gets on it, and how do they want to design it? And then they could bring probably a couple of packages to us.
Correct. So it, it really, as Councilman Plot just indicated, it really depends on the scope of what you're, you're looking for. If you're looking for a traffic monitoring camera system that is citywide, then obviously that's going to be much more expensive. If you look at the city of Moreno Valley, for example, that was, I believe, $2 million implementation. What the city of Chino has done, and we've already met with them, staff has met with them and gone through their system. They chose specific locations. So their, their CC, excuse me, their license, their ALPRs are not on every single intersection. But it is actually two cameras that take separate pictures, one of the vehicle coming and another as it's going. So it's two cameras per, per signal arm.
And the way they did it, for the most part, was every egress, ingress of their city boundaries, basically, is what they, is how they kind of put it together.
Correct. So, so we put a number in here for, you know, if you wanted the Cadillac version of everything. And we can go down from there. But it's, we wanted to put something more substantial in there to give council room to whittle it down and, or, or stick with, with what we're tentatively looking at.
So, I'm sorry, I don't know if we got, maybe I missed the response. The Cadillac includes, what, 50 cameras mounted on, also mounted on police cars? Are these only fixed? What, what sort of numbers are we talking about that arrived at this approximate number of a million dollar?
Unfortunately, Craig is not here to answer that question. And this is, this came from Public Works. It's, it was my understanding that it was for, I think he said, all of the intersections.
All entry points, the next point, yeah.
All the major entry points, so. And, and plus the, plus the camera monitoring system. So the ALPRs do not monitor traffic. They're just strictly taking a photo of the license plate. And then there's the traffic monitoring cameras, which is a separate system.
Which is, just to understand, it's what we currently have, but we want to kind of expand that out and make it, again, maybe cover the entry-exit points or whatever we decide as a council. But it's just to expand on what we currently have and kind of make it more robust.
Correct. And this would require some policies to come before council about retention and how the, how the data is used and retained. We, we're using some of our information that has come from the city of Chino as, as our, our sort of test subject, if you will. And we are able to piggyback on their contracts. So we will be able to realize some savings there as well. However, in addition to the cameras, there's, there's significant infrastructure that needs to go in as well for wireless and Wi-Fi, gosh, the conduits.
I think we definitely need to continue exploring it and narrow it down to a harder number. So I, I like it.
And I'll just commend the city on this. I, I know they're working diligently on it. We just, there's really no point in putting numbers because we literally just found out two days ago that technically weren't even able to do it because there was no one to be able to operate it. Well, now that Riverside County Sheriff can operate it, which was, we just found this out two days ago, said they just found out they were able to do it as well. They got their approval. So really, the numbers are very, very rough. We will really start, I would imagine that staff is going to be diving in this probably in the next couple of weeks or so. But, yeah, just to staff's credit, they've been working on it. But they can only work so much on it because there's, there's really no point in doing it until we can get an approval, which we have now.
Correct. So, so to, to, for the benefit of the public, what Councilmember Plot is referring to is for the ALPRs, in order to view the data, you have to be in law enforcement. We could be a member of, a subscriber to the service, but we're not allowed to view the data because we're not law enforcement personnel or, you know, it's a, it's a statewide and actually nationwide database that this information filters into. And so it definitely created an obstacle for us that while we may subscribe to the service and we could put up ALPRs, we can't view it. And our patrol units didn't have the technology in the patrol units to, to get live stream of this data either. So the, the question became, how, how useful is this really going to be until the sheriff's department has the technology in the patrol units to, to utilize and to utilize this technology to its fullest capacity? So now that the sheriff's department has that worked out and they have a, will have a contract with Vigilant, we can move forward on our end.
Okay. We took you off track, Anna, I'm sorry.
To continue, another item is neighborhood watch program. To, most of that is volunteer time. There would be minimal staff time, but the majority of the cost would be for actual signs, neighborhood watch signs, volunteer patrols. Sheriff's Department has indicated that'd be about 900 hours. But the cost would just be for mileage because that again is a volunteer program.
And if I may clarify, the neighborhood watch program, the signs, the signs are paid for by the citizens, but the installation of the signs is being paid for by the city. And the signs, depending upon where they're being installed and what kind of equipment is required to do the installation, the installation can run anywhere from $30 a sign to $65.
So that would be roughly about 100 signs at the city. If, if you choose to do more, that'd again be more of a cost. Some of the long-term capital projects, the I-15 interchange, I have a little bit of updated information for that. The city has, will budget in the CIP program about $180,000. But we're guessing it'll be more like $50,000. So this is a worst case. And that's just for city staff time and inspection. The Hamner Bridge, which the city of Norco is the lead, is about a $56 million project. I've been told, after the fact, that this is entirely paid for by Tump Fund, so there will be no city impact to this project. The Civic Center.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. The, the Hamner Bridge project is, is SB 132 dollars. I'm sorry, that's, we will correct that on the slide. This was one of the, kind of the trailer bills to SB 1 and SB 130. So that, the dollars from SB 132 is specifically earmarked for the Hamner Bridge, the I-15 interchange, and then a project in Euripus Valley and Corona.
I thought the Hamner Bridge was a lot less than 56 million. My, like.
No, it, the Hamner, the Hamner Bridge in the city of Norco is a $56 million.
Our, our.
It's total, $56 million total. It is largely funded through, through federal dollars.
But our SB 132 funds that went to ESO was 6 million, correct?
It was 6.3 million dollars.
Yeah, okay.
And if you recall, the city of Norco originally was asking for the city of Eastvale to pay half of that. So we're very grateful for SB 132 dollars and kind of taking that obligation off of our, our plate. So, but we, we will correct that on the slide.
The Civic Center, we are anticipating a land purchase of about $3.7 million. That will be mostly paid for through DIF funding and a little bit of the city reserves of that $3 million of committed reserves. The remainder of the project is still yet to be determined. We estimate about $19 million. And again, that's a rough estimate until we do some sort of study or more of a concrete plan. We don't know how that's going to be funded. It could partially, we can finance, partially we can use reserves for that. We can bring that back to you once we have more definite estimates on that. Emergency Operations Center, this was a longstanding project for the last couple of years. The estimate is about $875,000. The impact to the city depends on any grant funding we can get for that. Limonite to Kimball, also a long-term project. It's roughly, again, about $5 million. This could be paid for through our road and bridge district funding, which we have roughly about $5 million to spend on that. We have the streetlight purchase and LED retrofit. That will be financed over 15 years and that will be paid for through the LMDs. Traffic signal synchronization, each project is about $25,000 and that is paid for through gas tax and Measure A. There's no impact to general fund for that. Public Works has requested some scanning and indexing of their files. The total cost for that is about $30,000. Also on the, the council wish list is reducing traffic bottlenecks, improving roadway striping and delineating traffic lanes near the Lil property. All of these are already part of the CIP projects, whether that be the traffic signal synchronization, street resurfacing, or the Hamner widening. So we are waiting on those projects to be started for those items to be completed. Commercial zone policing, this is an hourly charge for quality of life overtime through the sheriff's department. And it just depends on, on council demand or hours dedicated to this, this program. Community emergency response team, and this cost also varies. I got updated numbers. It could be upwards of about $30,000 depending on the, the level of services provided. An additional code enforcement officer for full-time fully burdened, it would be about $93,000. And part-time would be about $65,000 a year. Purchasing code enforcement vehicles, trucks could be upwards of $70,000. A sedan, um, an electric sedan paid for by AKMD could be about thirty-three thousand dollars. Additional part-time street sweeping enforcement officer, um, is about fifty thousand dollars and that's fully burdened with, um, health benefits and retirement rates. Animal control, currently we have a part-time officer with, for about sixty-three thousand to add a, to make it a full-time officer. It would be basically double that cost. So, you're going to see an additional sixty-three, sixty-three thousand for a full-time officer. The AVA, abandoned vehicle abatement program for an officer and a vehicle. It could be, uh, just depending on if you want full-time, part-time, including a vehicle would be roughly about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Other items that staff is requesting is a user fee study to update. Last one we had was in two thousand thirteen, so we're due for an update on that. Development impact fee study, the last one we approved was in two thousand twelve. Again, we're due for an update. Uh, the finance system update, we'd like to get online payments just, um, as requested by citizens and just to automate, uh, more of the process. It would be roughly about thirty thousand dollars. Uh, currently, our economic development budget is two hundred thousand dollars. If you wish to increase that, um, anything, any services above and beyond what we already have would be an increase to about two hundred thousand dollars that we already have. We've discussed a PERS buyout, um, and that just depends on the discount rate. But our actuarial reports, um, show that the total would be about one point two million to opt out of PERS based on our current obligations. A city sister program, um, is about eight hundred dollars a year. However, um, I've been informed that you need a, and a foundation to correlate with the sister city program. And that would include some additional staff time. The library foundation, we don't have any costs for that. We can look into that and bring that back to you. Um, that would include some staff time and then some legal to get that up and running. And going back to, um, some of the previous slides where we saw the increase in public safety costs, um, we can commit some of those reserves to public safety stabilization so we can kind of save for the future should we see those inc, costs increase even further. And that's discretionary, uh, however much you want to dedicate towards that, that service. As we age, the city gets older, we can see an increase in, um, infrastructure replacement. Currently, where our infrastructure is maintained very well. And we, I talked to Public Works and they say that we're, we're still a brand-new city. Uh, we don't have a lot of problems that are surrounding neighboring cities do. However, if we choose to, to commit some of those funds for, you know, a ten, twenty-year purpose, we can do that. Um, and again, that's discretionary. And then as each of these services grow, we, um, find that we need staff to handle some of these additional programs. Four or five positions, uh, could be upwards of four hundred and fifty thousand, just depending on what position, if it's full or part-time. And again, we can bring back specific numbers once we, um, get more direction. So, those are the items. We'd like to get some feedback from you on what you'd like to see in the next year's budget or what we can bring back, uh, for more specific, uh, financial information. Um, as far as next steps, um, in two weeks, we have a public safety study session, which will go over, uh, the contract rate and services for police and fire, uh, really dive into the details of public safety and what we pay for. On May twenty-third, we expect to bring a draft budget to you. And then on June twenty-second, we hope to get the budget adopted. So, that's, um, items to put on your calendar. So, I will be happy to take any questions that you have.
Um, I would like to point out that Craig Bradshaw is here now from Public Works. So, if you have additional questions on the ALPR and camera system, um, Craig may be able to elaborate.
Okay. If we don't have questions, do we have feedback?
Yeah. There's a lot of spending here. A lot of it's great, but, uh, we obviously have to prioritize. Um, and I would remain, I would like us to see, remain focused on what I feel strongly about, and that's the, uh, additional patrol hours, uh, the camera systems, uh, putting money in for the, uh, Civic Center and, uh, putting more into our rainy day fund for future infrastructure costs that are going to come up down the road. And PERS buyout, because the longer we're in it, the deeper the hole gets.
Yeah, I would say for, you know, for us as a council, you know, the mayor, they kind of put together early in, in February, kind of had the idea was to come together, set what our priorities are for this year. Public safety being number one. I, for me, it would be the integration of the ALPR cameras. More fixed cameras, right? To basically provide tools to the, was it better? To provide tools to the officers to help them be more efficient, to give them basically what they're intended to, what they want to do, right? And that's capture the bad guys and, and giving them the right tools. I think it's something that we need to provide as a city and to make their time more efficient, um, as possible. I, I, I think adding ten more additional hours on top of the ten hours, I'm not necessarily in favor of, uh, because I think we need to see the ten hours we just purchased. And we, we haven't seen that yet and we won't see it till the end of the year. We need to see how that plays out. What do the stats look like after that? What are the, what are our response times look like? Um, I think that's important, uh, and especially now with the new technology that hopefully we'd be looking and purchasing. I think we'll see a greater efficiency as well. Um, that's kind of my take on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would agree with what, uh, Councilmember Plot just, just mentioned and echo his comments with the fact of, uh, the desire to add the tools to our officers as being one of our top priorities, such as the cameras. One of the other things that I'd like to see on the public safety side is also look at and evaluate additional CSOs, if we can utilize those, um, and the cost for those. Also, as Councilmember Tassari said, the PERS buyout is something that I think would be worthwhile for us to look into. Um, I'd also like to see us, uh, look a little bit more into animal control, our options. Um, we do have our current animal control officer retiring. Um, it might be a good time to transition with that. Um, I'd also like to see, I, I know we're, um, in the process of, uh, we just added a senior code enforcement officer and continuing to add to that department. I'd like to see, um, the possibility of continuing to add to that, that department, to make it so that we can get our code enforcement to be proac, more, a little bit more proactive. They're doing a great job with the resources they have, but I think right now we don't have, um, the amount of resources that, that we could use. Um, I think it, it would be worthwhile looking at that. And then also, the Civic Center. I think that's something that our, our residents want. We want, we want our own city hall. We would like to have a library. We'd like to have those kind of things. So, I think that's something that would be great to look into.
One more thing, it slipped my mind and it shouldn't have because it's extremely important to me. Uh, there was an allocation to economic development. I think we definitely need to, whatever those things we need to spend money on, whether it be for the city manager, for the staff, to give them more tools to entice more retailers to come in, that's spending money to make money, right? And, and that's smart spending. Um, definitely, you, whatever we can allocate to use that money. And I've always kind of preached, since the vehicle license fee, I think there was, since we received our vehicle license fee, there's three things that we should be focusing on. One's building the reserves, two, spending in public safety, three, spend money in economic development, meaning enticing retailers to come here to basically invest in Eastville. That way, our sales tax revenue grows. So, um, I, I forgot to mention economic development. That was really important. So, whatever those things are, whether it's going to certain events, certain things to talk or whatever, it, we, we need to have that focus.
One, one last quick thing, sorry. Um, looking at the law enforcement increase, um, that we're, we're averaging about seven percent. Um, I just wanted to, to say, that's a major concern of mine, is that we're seeing a CPI increase under three percent, but yet we're seeing a law enforcement increase on average. I mean, this year, we're seeing a close to ten percent increase. Um, that's a big concern. We can only sustain that for so long.
Um, okay, so, great comments by everybody. Uh, it is obvious that one of our, well, our top priority is public safety, continuing that. Um, we have a lot of, we've been waiting on those vehicle licensing fees to come, sort of pent-up demand of things that we would like to come into play. Um, there were some items in here, I, I, I have, I'm in agreement with much of what my colleagues have, uh, stated already. Um, some of the things that are lower dollar, though, I don't want them to necessarily fall off. Uh, things like, uh, the, the sister city program. I think it adds to our community, uh, builds that sense of community even more than we already have in place. Little, uh, also the volunteer hours, um, for, to augment our law enforcement. Things like that, I think, will be helpful. I understand there was discussion previously about a needing to purchase a vehicle for that as well. Um, I don't know, I might have missed it in the discussion as the items here.
It, there's a possibility it could be donated.
Okay.
We can bring back numbers for you.
Also, uh, here, we talk about the CERT program, which I think is an amazing program. If anybody out here has a free weekend, uh, take the time when we have an upcoming class, uh, that is presented. It teaches you, um, a great deal in case, well, not in case, when an emergency does happen, you will be prepared, you will be able to go out into the community, help your neighbors. This side of it, though, I would like to see a little bit of money put towards coordination of those that we have already put through these programs. So that i, in coordination with our law enforcement, fire, so that, um, when something happens, uh, we have these volunteers that are not only continually getting trained, but able to go out and facilitate. Because if we do have, when we have the big one, um, families will be separated and we will have to rely on ourselves here. So, um, spending a little bit of money in that, I don't know if it's staff time, um, coordinating with the fire department, police department, uh, I think that would be helpful. But, a lot of great things in here, um, but again, public, public safety, number one. So, comments, thank you.
Uh, Count, Mayor Laura Martin.
Yes.
I'd like to address a few of your...
By all means.
...the council comments and suggestions. Um, the CALPERS buyout, that is something, uh, from city manager's offices, in my opinion, a top priority. I think you can all see in the news that, um, this is a growing challenge for all cities across California. And we are in a position, being that we are a new city and, uh, don't have a lot of staff, that our PERS, uh, obligations and our liability is currently minimal. So, um, this is something we would like, I would like to bring in a consultant. We do not have the expertise in-house to analyze and get through the legal minutia of how that works. There's very few, uh, cities that have done it so far. So, um, that is something that we will be moving forward with and bringing back, um, some additional details. Um, it is a long process. It takes approximately a year to, um, to, uh, disengage from CALPERS. And then, of course, we would have to find an alternative acceptable retirement system for city staff. For the animal control contract we have in previous years, uh, met with the city of Norco, city of Corona and the, um, uh, Inland Valley Humane Society in the city of Pomona regarding, uh, animal control services. And, um, city of Norco is not able to service our city based on the volume. They have already indicated that they, they are not able to enhance our services at a cost that we currently have without actually, um, resulting in them having to build more facility, which, of course, they would ask us to, to share in the expense of. Uh, city of Corona did a cost analysis and, um, it is not going in the right direction. Um, it was upwards of half a million dollars. So, um, and I have that information from the research that we did last year on this topic. Um, we can go back to the Riverside County Sheriff, or Riverside County Animal Control Services and increase our services with them by fifty percent. And that's what we have here proposed for you today. Um, I can certainly bring back some of this data from previous years or, or refresh the data to initiate those conversations. But, um, I don't foresee us being able to contract with a neighboring city for those services. Um, for emergency management, I believe what you're asking for is a train and retain program. Um, that does require significant staff time to manage and, um, control on top of all of the EMPG and the SHIP grants. Those are very time-consuming grant applications to, to get through, um, as well as coordinating the CERT training. Um, that's really the, the job of an emergency management coordinator. Um, one of the things that I will be proposing in the next draft of the budget is a part-time emergency management coordinator so that they can handle managing all of the grants, uh, you know, going through all of the grant modifications, uh, the financing component, and then, um, your train and retain program as well as your ongoing CERT classes and your CERT refresher courses. And lastly, with the city being so new, we have really operated on, um, a very thin margin. You can go back to the original slide and see that the number of staff has not increased exponentially, but the complexities at city hall have, uh, the demands of the citizens and their expectations have. Um, and that's absolutely understandable, but in order for city hall to continue to meet the needs of our citizens and the expectations of city council, we do need to add additional staff at city hall. Um, there's only so much blood you can squeeze from a turnip. And, and I think it's time to start adding some staff at city hall. That is why we've put into this budget estimate, um, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for additional staff. Um, we've tried to do some very creative things with, um, you know, part-time positions, with volunteers, with interns that were not funded. And then we tried paid interns. And, and this has been a fantastic experience. And, um, I, I love all the interns that we have worked with at city hall. And they get fantastic training and, and we lose that institutional knowledge. Um, we lose having, having someone that has, that has really learned the ins and outs. And, and I'm glad to see and grateful to see that that experience allows them to, to land a, a bigger and better job somewhere else. But at the same time, that does create a significant burden on city staff because you have a revolving door of training and then a big gap in, in downtime while we try to recruit and train another intern. So, I will be proposing some part-time positions, one in finance, um, one in the, uh, city manager's office for communications. And then, of course, we will still have, working with our, um, local, uh, colleges and institutions, we will be developing more of a, an internship program that, that will likely not be a paid internship. But I'd like to replace some of the paid internships with, uh, part-time positions at city hall. Um, to, uh, Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Rigby's point, I agree with you completely, sir, that increasing our, our code enforcement and building it back up to where it needs to be is, is needed. That's one of the quality of life issues. Those are some of the most frequent complaints at city hall, um, regarding, you know, your basic things from trash cans to, to more, to more complex issues, um, that are dealt with by code enforcement. So, you're correct, we have a new senior code enforcement, Mario. He's been here for a few months now. Um, we do have another code enforcement officer, um, Chris, Christopher, um, DeHos, uh, starting next Wednesday. We do have our... We do have our code enforcement technician, Jared Perez, who's actually at PC-832 training right now, so he's with us full-time as well. And then we have our one part-time street sweeping enforcement officer, and I would like to add a second street sweeping, part-time street sweeping enforcement officer. There's several reasons for that because it allows for the streets to be covered simultaneously by two bodies opposite ends of the street and there's enhanced safety component for the personnel being out there. And then also it relieves the burden on our traffic CSOs that offer assistance when our street sweeping officers, officers need it for, you know, a sick day or just backup log on, on doing enforcement. So having another part-time street sweeping enforcement officer would free up some of our CSOs to, to get them dedicated back towards law enforcement services. And for economic development, as, as we mentioned here, we have, currently have and have had in our budget year-over-year for the last two or three years, $200,000. $100,000 is in the city council budget for a smart city initiative specifically. And then the other $100,000 has been in the city manager's office and that pays for our consultant from HDL Econ Solutions as well as, you know, other consultants that we might bring in such as the hospital consultant, attending ICSC, those type of events. I do feel, I have economic development training, but I, I feel that it is a disservice to the city to try to wear two hats as the city manager and the economic development person. So I am going to be proposing a position for economic development coordinator or economic development personnel to be doing that full-time. And so these items will come back to you in the next draft of the budget.
Excellent, thank you.
So we're, the long and the short of it is, I feel, one would like to commend our city staff for, for doing a fantastic job putting this together, Anna. And all of the department heads that have been scrambling to give numbers and estimates so that we can include this information in the budget. And also to commend them for the hard work and dedication that they have given to the city of Eastville over the last several years and working through the challenges, you know, losing 19.3 million dollars due to our VLF and continuing to meet the demands and the needs of the citizens and trying to meet the expectations of the city council has not been a small task. So I commend our staff for everything that they're doing and, you know, we have great things ahead. The city of Eastville is truly a shining star in, in the inland empire and, and I think we have an opportunity here to take a conservative approach. We do have some extra money, but I am not a big proponent of spending it. I would like to see an incremental conservative, remain to have a conservative approach towards how we continue to grow the services and meet the needs of the community. I do feel strongly that we should establish a rate stabilization fund for public safety because we know that that, that expense is not going to be going away anytime soon. And we can set some, squirrel some of our, our surplus aside for the coming years.
I do want to ask, there were several people here from the beginning that sat through the budget presentation. Did you have any comments that you wanted to share? All right. Ms. Vega, are we soliciting a motion on the items that were, okay, I have this here in front of me, that's why. All right, so we are moving to adjourn the budget workshop to the regular meeting of the city council. So, thank you. We will take a couple-minute break before we kick off.